Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I had a chat with the first select woman this evening who was urging everybody to keep their masks on while indoors. If you need to take it off to speak in your microphone and you're more comfortable that way, that is fine. And same people at the podium. But I think with this new wave, we should respect our own germs. Seated tonight are myself, Ben Filbrick, Fred Dykman, Lynn Conway, Chuck Sheehan, Ryan Deasy, and we have Gary Belkey as an alternate, Marjorie Selinger as an alternate, and Andy Meek as our alternate. And seated would be Andy today? Gail, is that how it works?
Well, not all, all of the regular members are here.
So we don't need a seat?
Right.
Okay. So I guess we're on to the minutes. We have two minutes, one from November and one from December.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for November, and I will abstain from the minutes of December. Sucker.
Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty. Correspondence. There was one note from Nancy DiStang, which I'll try to deal with at some point. Reports, staff. Keith, you're on.
Item 5B1, there's a preliminary discussion of cannabis zoning regulation amendment. As you know, last year, the state approved Connecticut Public Act 21-1, which legalized recreational marijuana in the state. It establishes municipalities' options for how they want to regulate that. At past meetings when we've brought this up, the commission wanted to hear from the public in the form of a town-wide referendum as to whether people would want to allow these sort of businesses in town. So back in October, October 5th of last year, a majority of voters did approve the idea of cannabis sales, setting the stage for that going forward. So the next discussion to have tonight is how we want to approach this in our land use regulations, where we do want to see this type of thing. The state public act, it talks about and defines eight specific types of licenses. You know, retailers being the main one, which would have the most impact on the community as far as traffic and visitation and things like that. Some of the other ones, like micro-cultivator, project, product packager, delivery service or transporter, seem not to have as much in the way as potential negative impacts. They seem to be close to other conventional manufacturing or delivery-type uses in the So, you know, the retail sales seem to be the thing to focus on the most here. So the memo that I write, that I wrote to the commission, just in an effort to frame the discussion, talked about a few possible approaches to the regulation of recreational cannabis retail sales. And of course, these aren't the only options. One was to have a regulation amendment to allow it by special permit in all commercial zones where either retail or liquor sales are already allowed. These are generally all the commercial zones except the industrial zones. Another option is to allow them by special permit in just the towns' more highway-oriented commercial zones, being the TC-80 around exit 90 in Mystic, or the HI-60 near exit 92 in Pawtucket. These areas have good highway access. They tend to have fewer residential neighbors than other commercial districts. They both have some vacant or underutilized properties that might fit the bill. Another option, which may not work well in this town, but that some other towns have done, is to allow them by, to allow retail sales by special permit in the town's industrial zones. Some communities take this approach to sort of isolate the use in one area of town. Stonington might be a bit different in that a lot of its industrial zones tend to be near residential areas or have transportation problems, like if you think of Mechanic Street in Pawtucket, or the area south of the railroad tracks in Mystic. You know, we don't have like the one industrial zone and an industrial park somewhere like some towns do. And the other option is to do what a lot of towns have done, which is to adopt a six-month or one-year moratorium to give us more time to establish these regulations. If we did do a moratorium, the act of having a moratorium needs its own zoning regulation amendment in public hearing to change the regulations, to put the brakes temporarily on this sort of use. We may not need to do that. You know, if we have guidance from the commission tonight, it shouldn't take too long to come up with a zoning regulation amendment, submit it as an application, and schedule a public hearing sometime in the next couple of months on a potential regulation. As far as other zoning issues, the zoning regulations can establish reasonable restrictions on hours, signage, and things like minimum distances to schools, places of worship, and other similar activities. The regulations could also include regulation of medical marijuana, which has already been legal in the state, but we don't address in our regulations. The town should consider which, if any, of the existing floating zones this use should be allowed in. And we have about five of them to think about. And as we do this, you know, we'd run any draft of regulation by the police department to get their take on it, and the town attorney for legal advice. So, you know, the main point of tonight's meeting is just to get the, see if there is a consensus, or get the commission's take upon, you know, which areas of the town might be appropriate, especially for the retail sales of cannabis.
I'm of the opinion we should move ahead with it rather than a moratorium. I think it's, get this one out of the way so we can move on to some other topics.
I agree.
That are more, as important or more important, such as affordable housing and some other things coming down the pike. And I guess I would be leaning towards the retailer zone in the industrial, in extent, not the industrial, excuse me.
Number two, option number two.
Number two, yeah. Right, thank you.
The highway.
Any thoughts from anybody else?
I agree with option number two is being the most logical way to move forward on this, from what I see.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I actually, it's her.
The highway commercial, tourist commercial. Any other input?
It would be both of those. It could be both of those, exit 90 and 92.
Yeah, and it probably makes sense to do both, since they are pretty similar.
So, so number two is, is special permit in the town's highway-oriented commercial zones? I, you know, I generally agree with that, Mr. Chairman, but I, I'm also intrigued and think that it might be worthwhile to consider the industrial zones as well, at the same time, in the discussion. Keep it in the discussion throughout the consideration phase. You know, as we get feedback from the public on this, in hearings, when we get regulations in front of us, you know, our feelings might be somewhat changed. There will be a public hearing on any change to the regulations, correct?
Right.
Okay.
But we would have to propose what's in the public hearing before.
I understand.
Right.
That's why I would like to, at least in the discussion phase. The industrial zone intrigues me because there's generally more consideration in industrial zones being separated with buffers from residences. I'm concerned that this, you know, the commercial zones are not as intensely buffered. So, so while we're considering this, and we have not yet developed a regulation, I'd like to broaden the consideration to include industrial zones as well. I'm more leaning towards number two, but, but I would like to keep that in the discussion as we at least move forward to the next phase of a draft regulation.
So I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Keith, the industrial zones are kind of scattered around throughout town, aren't they?
They are.
I think they are.
Yeah. And some of them are kind of close to residential areas, as you pointed out.
And that's why some of them may be inappropriate, and some of them might be appropriate.
Might be appropriate.
And that's where a special permit gives us the authority to make those distinctions. Again, it's not, it's not a hard and fast feeling that I have on this. I tend to agree with you in general that number two is, is probably the primary option if we're going to have a realistic regulation.
Right.
But we might also want to give some consideration to, before ruling it out, to industrial zones as well.
Okay.
And I would more leave that to staff, I think, than anything else. If there is no realistic possibility within the context of our industrial zone, then, then that would probably diminish my interest in pursuing it further.
Okay.
Keith, how many towns in Connecticut have put on a moratorium?
A lot of them have. It's been probably the most popular option for towns that have made a decision, or done something.
And what's the rationale behind that?
Just to give more time to, to adopt a regulation.
And perhaps to see how it works out for other towns who make regulations. It's always harder to undo something than it is to pause, consider, watch, and then make a decision. So I find it interesting that there's a large number of towns, and I'd like to know what the profiles of those towns are, in Connecticut, that have said, let's put this on hold, let's, let's see how, how other towns handle it, pros and cons, versus jumping in, because I just think it's more prudent.
Is there, is there any pressure to move quickly? Is anybody knocking on the door wanting to set up one of these shops?
I mean, theoretically, if you don't have a regulation or a moratorium, if someone applies, you know, you, you basically have to treat them like a similar
Sure.
non-marijuana use, like retail or alcohol sales.
But, but there's no real pressure at this point, so that we could do a moratorium and take our time to establish some regulations?
Yeah, I mean, as far as I know, there's not someone, you know.
Yeah, okay, that was my question.
Ready to apply. You know, there's been some general interest, but just with people calling and asking questions.
I wanted to ask a couple of questions. Is it possible to allow some of the permits that are out there, like the retail to happen in commercial, while allowing the more production-side permits to happen in the industrial? Could it be split apart that way?
You probably could. You probably could have a moratorium on just the retail end of it, and allow the more, you know, industrial, growing-type uses, which would just, they would just be allowed where similar types of uses are allowed.
Okay, I meant more as in, you know, if we were to adopt a policy on it, could, could the uses be separated between the different zones? Because to me, it makes sense to have retail in a commercial district, whereas I think it would be more difficult to accommodate the traffic to a new location like that in one of the industrial zones, whereas the production side is, you know, for the same reason, there are distinctions between commercial and industrial in general.
Yeah, and I should, I should clarify that. We've been mostly talking about the retail element.
Okay.
But, you know, in a, in a regulation, the other more industrial-type uses, or things like a delivery business, the assumption is that they would probably work better in the industrial areas.
Mm-hmm.
And I should also say that the state law limits us, due to our population, to only one retailer in town.
Right.
And only one micro-cultivator.
My other question is, you know, we're hardly the first state to have gone through this. Would it be possible to look at the examples of towns with similar demographics in states that already have implemented, just to expedite the decision-making a little bit?
Yeah, yeah. You know, it's a good idea, because, you know, we're not the first state to be dealing with this.
Right.
You know, it seems like traffic tends to be one of the big issues, especially when they first open up. I'm sure as more and more of them open up in the state, you know, it might not be such a big deal, like the way, not every liquor store has traffic jams, but if there is only one liquor store in southeastern Connecticut, you know, you might have more of these, more of these issues.
Keith, I have another question, just on the moratorium, so we can either do six months or a year after that, we have to go forward with regulations, or what are our options after the moratorium ends?
Right, right. I mean, towns do have the option of not amending their regulations, but you, you know, you'll be at the mercy of an application that comes in and has to be treated
Right.
like a regular retail use.
But the moratorium, just, just so I understand, Ryan, during the moratorium, whether it's six months, a year, if an applicant comes in, it's kind of put on the shelf, because we, we don't have a regulation, we put a moratorium on it, and they, and the applicant cannot move forward until the end of that moratorium, and if our path is to then create a regulation, and the regulation is discussed and passed. It's not that the moratorium allows an applicant to come in and just move forward.
Is that correct?
That's the whole point.
Right. It basically does not allow the use for that period of time.
So it stops them there until the moratorium's over and we take actions somehow?
Exactly.
Right.
Okay.
You know, none of the towns that are in the list of examples, and I think you've done a good job of, you know, providing a cross-section of towns, are really, the towns that have adopted regulations are, are not towns with similar demographics and, and development mixes to this town. And, and I'm wondering if, if we look to shoreline communities in Massachusetts that's had these regulations longer. I know Mass's zoning statutes are different, but if we can obtain some feedback from towns that have adopted, they do have zoning in Massachusetts, and the regulations are structured somewhat similar to Connecticut's, section five of the general statutes. But, but I'm wondering if perhaps in the course of developing these regulations, there's a way to reach out to communities that have adopted regulations, and what their experiences with actually regulating these establishments have been.
Yeah. And I'm sure that, yeah, I'm sure they're good examples in Massachusetts.
And I also share Fred's thoughts, that, that, you know, we ought to move carefully and not too quickly on this, as, as other towns appear to have done. East Lime, Old Lime, and Waterford have not made decisions on this, and I think it would be a mistake to move too quickly on this.
So getting the flavor, we'll have a six-month moratorium and give this some more thought and research?
I, I think that proactive move may, makes sense, without, without it sending a signal that we're not inclined to look at this realistically, you know, that it be worded such that we want to, want to study best practices and, you know, develop a, a move in the, in the direction of development of fair and equitable regulations.
Does that give you enough time, you think, Keith, staff?
That, yeah, that would.
That makes sense. Six months makes more sense than a year. I think a year, honestly, is a little bit too long.
Lynn, six months?
I agree with that.
Okay.
And you can always extend it if something happens.
Right.
But I do think that it's important to get the information.
Okay. Do we need a vote on that, Keith, or is that enough consensus right there?
Yeah, this just seems like the consensus, so we'll
Okay.
We can submit that for, as a new application for the next meeting, with a public hearing for the moratorium sometime after that.
So just so that I understand the process, Keith, so we, we as a board are recommending a moratorium. You put it on the next agenda for public hearing, it can be discussed. We voted it at that time, then does it have, that's the end, from that point, it's going forward?
Well.
Or is there another step?
At the next meeting, it'll be submitted as a new application, but there won't be any, any discussion of it. The next real discussion will be for the public hearing, which won't be until at least a month after that, maybe the beginning of March, because of the notification requirements.
And if, if an application comes in, let's just pretend, application comes in tomorrow, are we able to say, listen, we have a moratorium, and, and you're not going to, you're not going to, we need to have a public hearing, it's, it's already scheduled for this time, so that's not going to
Well.
If the moratorium is not voted on during the public hearing, then your application can go forward, but since we've already kind of put this in play, we're good?
The moratorium really wouldn't be into, in effect, until it's approved after its public hearing, which would be probably the beginning of March. So even if we submit the application, it, it's not in effect until it's approved. So, yeah, theoretically, if someone came in with an application, they wouldn't be subject to the moratorium. You know, this commission would still have discretion to see whether it belongs where it's proposed, but, yeah, the moratorium wouldn't be in effect until after its public hearing.
Okay.
You have to live with that anyway, I mean, because it's, it's the regulations that are in effect when the application is filed
Right.
that are what, what dictates. So we're exposed to that no matter what.
That's right.
So the quicker we move, the better. It's a very good question, but
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at. Is there a way, I mean, do
Technically, I think we're stuck with that situation no matter what, so it is what it is, but it is a very good question.
Okay. Carleen is Yes, Carleen.
I would like to hear Mr. Brian's talk about industrial zones, if you want to consider it. I don't know if it means all industrial zones have to be treated exactly the same or not. That would be a question that should be answered before you consider putting industrial zones in there, because you may not be able to pick and choose.
Right.
That's what I think needs to be clarified.
Excellent comment.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good question. I mean, when we do up a regulation
Right.
we don't have to treat all the industrial zones the same, because they are different. I mean, we have the M1, which is the main industri, the main manufacturing zone, which is in different areas throughout town. There's also the LI-130, which is just exit 91.
Right.
And the HM, which is the mills on Mechanic Street. So all of those are different, and we want to think about that.
Thank you, Carleen.
I think we should look at each of those zones.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I agree with the comment that, you know, it's important when you're, whenever you're talking about amending one of these, to really understand what area, because you're not going to be able to just spot, spot zoning, right? You're not, we got to be careful there.
Yeah, and crafting the regulation, we can allow the, the types of different cannabis uses and the areas that we think
Yeah.
makes sense.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
So yes, six-month moratorium, regulation amendment it is?
Please.
So if that's it, for that, we have item 5D of the administrative review items. Item 5D1, PZ-2123 SUP Coastal Masonic Temple Corp. of Connecticut. Review of lighting plan for a previously approved application for an addition. Property located at 637 Pequot Trail, Stonington, Assessor's Map 72, Block 1, Lot 11, Zone RR80. This application for the Masonic Temple was approved a few months ago. One of the stipulations the commission had on there was that the lighting plan would come back for review by the commission. So the lighting plan was submitted. Shows four new light poles around the building, which will be 14 feet high and full cutoff. There's a submitted photometric plan that shows no light will stray outside of the parking lot. Actually, I have copies of the plan here, if you want to see that. And Mr. Cherenzia's here, whose firm developed the plan, if you have any questions.
Any questions?
I looked at it on the email. I didn't have any questions.
I think all the details, all the details are there, and had they been submitted with the application, we wouldn't have had this condition. But this is a very detailed submission.
Mm-hmm.
As is customary with this engineer, and I have no issue with it.
Thank you.
And there's no signage on the street on Pequot Trail that's lit up? This was just the parking lots, correct?
Right.
So basically, just to summarize, maybe if the applicant's here, when you're going down Pequot Trail, which is a pretty black area, nighttime lighting, you're really not going to, to see the lights. It's really just as you go into the property to go into the building, that they'll, they'll be lit from a visual perspective. Is that correct?
Can you come over to address that?
Ah, yes, please.
Does the mic need to be on?
Yeah, it should be.
It's on, thank you. For the record, Sergio Cherenzia with Cherenzia and Associates, offices located at 99 Mechanic Street in Pawtucket. To answer your question, the, the lights that are being proposed are really the minimal needed for safety and security of the, of the parking lot. And there is a photometric plan. I'm not sure if it made it into your packets,
Yes.
but it does indicate that there will be, the zeros at the, at the ends indicate there will be no artificial illumination beyond that, at that foot candle level. So, although when you drive by, I'm sure you'll be able to look directly and see the lights into the sight, but they won't be shedding light onto the road.
Mm-hmm.
And nor will the wetlands be artificially illuminated either.
Just one additional question while we have the engineer, Mr. Chairman. I see the spec sheet is here, but with my glasses, I, I guess I could enlarge it. Are these dark sky compliant?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And if you would want to condition it such, that's perfectly fine as well.
No.
But they will be dark sky compliant, all full cutoff lights.
Not fine.
Is that what the D in the D-series means?
I believe so. I'd, I'd have to check. I don't have it in front of me right now. It's in my bag.
No, I just, I figured it did. It looks good by me. Any other comments, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do you hear a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve the application. Second
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Next.
Item 5D2, this is the issue of Pawtucket Little League and the potential drive-in movie theater idea. They've asked for this, this discussion to be tabled to a future meeting. We don't really need a motion on it. Item 5D3, Connecticut General Statutes 8-24 review. This is a review of road acceptance of a portion of Nautilus Way in Yellowfin Court for Toll Brothers Old Mystic Estates Development. And eight, section 8-24 of Connecticut General Statutes says that when a town makes a decision for a municipal improvement, they call it, it needs a report from the Planning Commission or Planning and Zoning Commission as to whether it's consistent or not consistent with the plan of conservation and development. And one of the things that is considered a municipal improvement is acceptance of a road. So even though the commission has already approved this subdivision, the acceptance of the road is supposed to have this vote as to whether it's consistent or not consistent with the P O C D. This is the Old Mystic Estates subdivision off Pequot Trail. This is the, the western half of it, the western half of Nautilus Way and Yellowfin Court. They are preparing to ask the Board of Selectmen to accept the road. They're sort of finishing up the punch list of minor items with, with the town engineer. So before that happens, we've referred it to you for the vote of consistent or not consistent with the P O C D. Of course, the P O C D doesn't get into that much detail about whether this specific road is consistent. But one thing in their favor is that the commission's 2004 approval for the subdivision did have resolution language saying that the plan conformed with the P O C D in effect at the time. The current P O C D, the future land use plan, shows it as recommending low and moderate density residential. And there is a recommendation of the P O C D about having sidewalks, which this, which this road does. And that's about it for that. That's really the, the only two options are just, you know, the vote of consistent or not consistent with the, with the P O C D.
So this won't come back to us again? It, it will go to the Board of Selectmen for acceptance when the town engineer says it goes?
Yeah, essentially, that's, that's right. It will come back to you again because they are going to ask for more bond money back.
Right, release the bond.
Yeah.
I don't know, it just seems like it's out of, out of sequence a little bit. I, you know, like it, I, I guess I would have less consternation or no questions at all, not really any consternation, but less questions if the town engineer was fully satisfied that...
Yeah, I don't see any comments here.
That it meet, that it meets all the conditions for acceptance. And, and we recommend acceptance, you know, and also this P O C D compliance thing all at once, as opposed to, you know, dealing with it in this manner.
Could we stipulate that we, if, as a compromise, that based, we would accept it as, except meeting the P O C D based on the town engineer's approval?
You, you could. I mean, it's really the only thing purely to consider is, you know, whether it's consistent with the P O C D. The town engineer issues will definitely come into play when they apply for the rest of the bond money back. And that's really the hard back question.
So I guess we'll really protect it, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Let's say, for instance, there is something that is not done. We're still protected because we have the bond money and we could force the developer, even though the road is now town property, we could force the developer to fix something because we have, or to the bond money.
Right, and the, the selectman will not accept the road until the town engineer recommends that they do.
Signs off on it. Oh, okay.
Okay, then I think we're, I think we're adequately protected.
Yeah, that's the bottom line. Good.
So we could, we could approve it, either just to prove it flat out or prove it condition on...
I think they're just asking us to make a motion that the road is in compliance with the plan of conservation and development, correct?
There's really no way we can't because we approved the subdivision and the subdivision had the road. And at that time, we said it was compliant.
I know.
So, I mean...
You've always approved it once.
There's no way to stand on...
You approved the layout once.
Yeah, so it's hard to say now, it's hard to now say it doesn't comply with the P O C D when it was approved.
Okay, let's...
I do think, though, just, you know, that in the past, recent past, we've had applicants come back for bond money and when asked, did they comply with everything, et cetera, et cetera, there was a little bit of back and forth, and in fact, they had not, and we denied the bond being...
We have, correct.
Given back. So I do think that it's very important, and I don't, I don't know if we did this at the time or we need to do it now retrospectively, that whatever we think needs to happen, even if it's not an engineering aspect, but a wall being built, plantings being made, I don't know, things leveling out, whatever it is, that that is part of that bond, you know, that before they get any money that's bonded back, that those things have been done. So I guess my point is, Keith, you know, if they come back a few years from now or a six-month from now, we need to really understand what it was that we said they needed to do and kind of have a check that it was done fully.
Yeah, yeah, and they should be, it probably won't be too long until they're back in front of you.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So kind of as a prep for that.
Right.
Good point. Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that, a motion that the portion of Nautilus Way and Yellowfin Court for Toll Brothers Phase 2, as depicted in the planner's report, is in compliance with the plan of conservation and development.
Consistent?
Consistent, correct. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Item 5D4, 21300ZON Alamo LLC, Russell Sargent, zoning permit for a 14 by 14 gazebo to be relocated out of the Upland Review area. Property located at 19 Old Stonington Road, Stonington, assessors map 153, block 1, lot 2, zone GC60. This application is for the Mystic Coastal Flooring property on Old Stonington Road. They were approved for a few things in 2007. They were approved for, to convert the existing structure to an office with a two-story addition in a new 4,950 square foot commercial building, which has not been constructed yet, towards the rear of the site. That permit's still valid, but the addition has also not been built there. A few years ago, they also received a special use permit to convert the second floor of the existing building into four residential units. So this current application just adds about a 196 square foot gazebo to the property for the use of the residents. It was initially installed adjacent to the inland wetlands, but it was moved to the current location away from the Upland Review area after they were notified that it was near the wetlands. So should the approved commercial building be constructed in this location as was permitted, the gazebo would have to be relocated as part of, as part of that. It does meet the bulk and use requirements of the GC60 zone. And Mr. Sargent and Mr. Contillo are here. I think Mr. Sargent wanted to say a few words.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. All right. Yeah, this is not the last time you're going to see us on this project, and it's not the last time you've seen us up until now. We wanted to fill in a little more history. When this building was built in the 80s, it was a marine chandlery on the first floor for the fisheries industry in Stonington. The entire second floor was an open net loft. When Alan and Maureen Contella bought the property, residential housing was allowed in the zone. After an influx of large residential projects further up on Route 1 in the Pawtucket area, the commission decided that they would maintain a commercial component. There was concern that they were losing commercial space in the GC60 zones. In 2007, we went for, when there was a demand for office, although by the time the recession hit and we did the project, there was no demand for office. And we did a fully commercial site on the project, which at that time was all we could do in terms of the amount of land area. We could have put one and a half dwelling units on the three acre, two and a half acre site. So that was not feasible. And we tried a number of zoning amendments on the site, one for active adult housing, which was not a really good fit. We tried another one for light industrial, similar to the LI 130 zone up on Taglan Road, but to downsize it to LI 60 because essentially, we had a fire station, an oil terminal, and then, you know, the, the Mr. Coastal Flooring building, which was essentially open, and the Sailor Ed's property, where not much has happened. In 2000, whatever year he just said, 19, I guess, we, after implementing a zoning amendment with the commission to allow it to become a residential mixed use to be allowed in the GC60 zone, which requires one-third commercial to two-thirds, a ratio of one-third commercial to two-thirds residential. And at that point, we were about 50/50, so we had some additional expansion potential. And if I could just indulge you a few minutes, I just wanted to show you sort of a schematic of what we're proposing. As I said, this is not the last place this gazebo is going to be. We're going, we're proposing to build a building on the location of the previously approved 4,950-foot, square foot, what was then going to be a commercial retail building. And if I can just get out, please. I've got 10, so hopefully you can send one to your left and right. Again, I don't know, left and right. Couple more, is there any?
Oh, here.
Okay.
Thank you.
If there's an extra...
There's one left. Okay, good.
You need an extra?
There's an extra, maybe give one to Keith.
There should be a couple extras.
Who needs it?
I don't think Keith got one. Thank you.
Is there one extra there? Nope.
No. Here we go. There's another.
All right. Work that away.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Thank you.
In the first page... In the first page, you can see the phase one existing four-apartment building. There's a retail storage space from Mr. Contillo's coastal, Mr. Coastal Flooring structure in that location. Previously, where the phase two addition, three apartments is, we had a two-story office expansion in that location. The original building was too large to allow handicap access to the second floor. There's a 3,000 square foot minimum, or about 5,400 square feet. So we had a full elevator and two floors of office in that location, and then a separate building to the lower right there, where you see phase two, 4,950, three-apartment building. So basically, we're going back to that 2007 sort of development of the site with what we're proposing here. But if you go to the second page, you can see in green to the left is the existing, that's the existing commercial space. And the blue right below that, the 5,807 square feet are where we have now four occupied apartments after the sewer moratorium and, you know, all the other things we've gone through, including pandemic and so on. And what we're looking to do, if you pop back up to the first floor, is add garage space for the apartments, but then create some additional commercial space, retail storage space, the 2123. And then that allows us to get two more two-bedrooms and a single one-bedroom at the second floor with a, you know, nice roof deck looking out into the open space behind. And there's, you know, basically three criteria, you know, three primary site constraints. One is we keep the 33% commercial and have, you know, no less than 33%. The other is, based on the Pawtucket experience, the residential mixed use or section of the regulation requires no more than 10 units. So we have 10 units, and the FAR obviously is the third criteria. And we're, if you look back to the first page, in the lower left, you can see the green and, the green and blue. And, you know, we're at 35.6%, where 33% is required. That's this third green line down, the one just above the, the bottom blue line. And then, you know, we're under the, the two-thirds maximum for the residential. The FAR is 24.4, and there are 10 units, four in the original building, and then three in the addition, and three in the standalone building out to the, out to the rear, which would be, you know, those would be flats there. There's no need for handicap accessibility for those. The existing building has a limited-use elevate, you know, elevator in it, which qualifies for this type of facility. That building's been fully sprinkled, and most of the units are occupied at this point in the original building. And, you know, there are some site issues which we're going to have to grapple with in terms of getting truck loading and, you know, there are very few semis delivering product these days. They're mostly box trucks, 45-foot box trucks, which could, you know, access a loading dock to the rear. But those are the sorts of things we're, you know, we're working on. And, you know, go back to my original point. This is, the gazebo shown in the location we're showing is not the final location the gazebo is going to be in. If you look at that first page, you can see I've sort of shown it slid over into some open space at the, you know, right rear of the property. You know, we're looking to get some more recreational space in there, and there's a three or four acre, you know, woodland behind that's going to remain woodland. I mean, there'll be a house on it at some point potentially. And then to the bottom of the page, to the, you know, to the, where the phase one, phase two, and the, and the blue and green lines are, that's where the Sailor Ed's property is. We've approached the previous owner, not the, the current owner, trying to get some recognition from him for the potential that's to develop out this, these, you know, these two parcels. And he wasn't interested. You know, one of the thoughts was to keep the, you know, where the building is now is a 60,000 square foot GC60 zone and combine the land where the phase two, 4,950 square foot, 4,4950 square foot building is with the Sailor Ed property, so you could get three properties there rather than just the two to there. But we have no real contact with the current owner, and the complexity of that is significant. So, you know, thank you for your time. I just wanted to give you the heads up, sort of whet your appetites, yeah.
Sure, could I ask a question? Just to clarify first.
Sure.
So where the gazebo is shown on your first page here at the very top there, is that where it currently is and you plan to move it to the location where the arrow is pointing?
No, the, the application before you tonight is to move it into the location of the, the new commercial building at the bottom. If you look at the...
It says gazebo, zoning permit application for 14 by 14 gazebo to be relocated.
Yeah, there's a diagram underneath the photograph there of the, of the gazebo. Do you have that one? It's page 26 of 50, I believe, or not.
On the orig, um, for the staff report.
In the staff, okay. That's...
Oh, yeah.
There's a picture in the staff report of where...
Right, no, understood. I was just trying to understand it. The application is for the gazebo.
Correct.
That's all we're talking about tonight. I just wanted, I didn't want to waste your time, but I just want to give you some sense.
No, no, understood. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
And, you know, right now, I just, you know, if there were any additional comments, you know, please to hear them, but we have, you know, a fair amount of work to do at this point to pull, put together an application.
For me, this is very helpful. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you people.
It's easier to understand when you're back in front once again.
Yes.
I appreciate it greatly. Thank you. A very good description.
Thank you.
Lynn?
I don't get that very often.
I guess I would make a motion to approve the application.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Thank you, Rusty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rusty.
Item 5D5, 21302ZON Mystic Seaport Museum, zoning permit application for modifications to visitor entry and exit decks. Proposal includes construction of an ADA compliant deck, stairs, and ramp, reconstruction of existing deck, stairs, and ramp, alteration of internal sidewalks, minor fencing additions, and planting improvements. Property located at 75 Greenville Mystic, assessors map 173, block 5, lot 4, zone MHD. block five, lot four, zone M H D. So this application includes a few things, reconstruction of the visitor deck, stairs and ramp to enhance ADA accessibility. Well, it looks like, looks like Mr. Frost has some boards there, so I think he will explain it more succinctly than I will.
Try to move that around a little bit. Move it around a little bit so you can see where we're going to get going. All right. Good evening. For the record, my name is Chad Frost, Principal with Kent Frost Landscapes Architecture here on behalf of the Seaport. As I think all of you know, the Seaport is part of the M H D Master Plan and so its zone is regulated by the Master Plan. So every couple of years, we come in front of you, normally with pretty large projects that require a whole new Master Plan. In between those Master Plans, you do have section eight, three, six of your regulations that allows for minor modifications within site plan, special use permits or master plans to make small adjustments as we go. So we're here tonight to talk about the Visitor Center. This is really just to enhance the visitor experience as you come and go to do some ADA improvements and some safety improvements. And so, I'll start this way and I'll handle it, but this is the beginning orientation. Route twenty-seven is at the top of the sheet. The Mystic River is at the bottom of the sheet. Where it goes to the center is the existing visitor entrance. This is the main entrance, right? So what a lot of us refer to as a southern entrance, not at the top of the building. And this building on the right hand side of the plan is the existing museum gift shop. Currently, everyone comes in, this is a plaza, so the lighted intersection is just off the top of the map. Everybody crosses via the crosswalk, they come into the plaza, you come up the center stairs into the visitor center. And then as you come onto the ground, you come through and there's doors to either side. So there's great entries you come in, very wide and generous. Then you get through the building and you go out one side or the other, down some narrow decks and the ADA handicap actually goes the opposite direction upwards of exit and then has to loop all back around again. So what we're proposing to do is to fix that, make it a much more generous safety stair case as you come out of the building, as well as allow the handicap right to both start and stop at the same place so you don't have two different areas of service. So that's the main area as far as the address into the property is. And then as you're also aware, right now, the exit, so if you're leaving the property through that entrance, through that main entrance, which gets a little confused, there's a road, a service road that comes up aside and a porch to share that goes through the building. There's a turnstile there to be back out of that plaza. What we'd like to do is actually close off that whole area behind the porch to share because there's an existing solid fence here that screens the loading docks and things like that behind the restaurant. We'll put a secondary fence down here and then shift the pedestrian entrance over into the gift shop building. So you come down the lane.
The exit.
The exit. Did I say entrance?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, the exit. We'll come down, we'll have a new set of stairs and ramps that then come into the gift shop building. You'll come in through here, go through the gift shop and then exit back out through the front doors of the gift shop and cross the street. So this is the demolition, just the condition plan.
What if you don't want to go to the gift shop?
When you're at the museum.
This is a market. This is a market.
Yeah, this is, this is a. You've been to Disneyland.
Every major museum, that's how you.
I know.
And so this is the proposed plan. Like I said, no impacts that are visible from the street. Everything is totally interior to the museum itself. The new, more generous accessible stairway, the ramp that leads around starts and stops both at the start and the end of the stairs. So new ants, maybe this screening fence to allow the utility area. And then we are providing a new walkway that connects all the way down to the new exit that will go through the gift shop. If you're aware, a lot of the places when you walk around within the campus, you're kind of in the middle of the roadway or walking along stoned dust paths and different surfaces. So we're trying to provide a true sidewalk that's equally wide along that whole area to make easy and accessible access down to the museum.
So what's going to go on between the new fence and the facade that's towards the?
Yeah, it's just, we're just leaving that as utility area. That's kind of back of house. There's some transformers back there. This is the loading zone, drop off area for the restaurant, service hall back there. So that just becomes kind of back of house. There's quite a few areas along there where we have a good frontage on the road and then kind of back house space and then the museum interior.
Okay, so you're not, you're not going to add anything in there during it?
Nope.
Thank you.
So pretty simple. We thought it was, you know, basically just a couple of decks that are smaller than most residential decks, but because of the M H D zone, we have to come back for you for the zone administrative change until we do the next Master Plan.
A few questions, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, Lee.
I'm looking at the L two point O plan. Thank you for the presentation.
Yep.
Very helpful. And I'm looking at the, you can barely see the existing contour lines below the proposed work, but it appears as though the walk is between elevation three and elevation four. Am I correct?
Approximately, yep. That's correct.
And how often does the river come up above that elevation?
Excellent question. So it does come up above there occasionally. There's actually an elevation two out there in the middle that's our lowest point on campus. That's been an area we've been dealing with quite a while to make sure that that, when it does flood, it normally comes up through the drain and then we evacuate it out. There is a long-term plan for the whole Seaport itself to adjust for sea level rise. Part of what we're doing is we do have two levels of steps in there. So we do have a plan, this is a long ways down the road at this point, but to allow for the grave in certain areas, critical resource areas within the campus to hopefully be elevated and other areas will probably be lowered and allowed to go back into water. And so that deck is at two different levels so that at that time, we'll just end at that mid-level landing, if that makes sense. So this accommodates now and we can continue to operate and then hopefully in the future, when we come back to you with that bigger vision, we can just meet at that mid-level landing, so.
Okay, so that's satisfactory to me. I think as long as I do see the midterm landing.
Yes.
And although there are no elevations here.
Correct.
I'm sure it provides with the number of steps that are shown here, it provides the kind of free board that I think you should plan for between what is the mean high tide and what is just high tide.
Yep.
My other question is, do you think that the bricks will withstand the hydrostatic forces of occasional flooding?
They have so far. So this is, we have, this is a continuation of brick even that we already have on campus. It's actually what's currently kind of on between the main entrance and the gap.
Okay.
And it has withstood quite well inundations, both flood and ice.
Is that at the same elevation?
We will be slightly higher than what it is right now, but yes.
Okay, and is that the same dry late brick that's proposed here?
Correct, yes. We're actually going to repurpose a lot of what we already have as we pull it up. We'll put it back down and then we'll match it with whatever we need new.
Thank you.
Yep.
Those are my questions.
Thank you. Do you have any lighting associated with this?
Good question. The railings have light on the underside of the rail.
Nice.
So it's the exact same thing, the detail that we did at the Thompson Building.
Yes.
So there's no pole lights, there's no massive amount of light, it's just a tiny bit of light because most of the time the campus is not open at after dark, so the lights will be off. It's just when they do their seasonal events, lantern light tour, that kind of thing, that they'll be able to turn them on.
Hopefully it's groundfall protected in that location.
It is, yes. Same, same we had to do it at the other end of this campus as well.
We don't want to light up the pedestrian.
Not so good.
Any other questions? To hear a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
So for item six A under Old Business, application P Z twenty-one, twenty-six, Cam Joseph and Laurie LaRosa, the applicants have requested that this be table until the next meeting as they await more input from DEP. So really that is, that is it for our agenda.
Any other topics to come before the commission?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So moved.